I'd like to call the order, the meeting, the continuation of the meeting from July 15th. Could you please take the roll?
Bowson.
Here.
Simonsen.
Here.
Voss.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Westergaard.
Here.
Mandelbaum.
Here.
Gatto.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And before we go on to the meeting, I just want to say thank you to our staff for what they did after the Monday night storm and acknowledge all the hard work they did. We had numerous citizens send in a thank you for the work they did in a timely manner. So to Ben Page and all the Park and Rec staff, to John Fagano and all the public work staff, and our police and fire who not only helped secure things but also then helped them clean up, and for all the volunteers, I know I was out on Friday cleaning raking Glendale Cemetery to get it and up in order. So I just want to thank everybody that showed up to really make a difference and applaud our staff for the hard work that they have done and probably are continuing. So, thank you. So with that, we have item number two, approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move approval.
Is there a second? Please vote.
Carl.
Yeah, yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. The next item is item 64 on a request from Orchard Place Des Moines Children's Home, Valerie Saltzgaver Officer to amend Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan to revise the future land use classification from low-density residential to low-medium-density residential and to rezone a parcel located in the vicinity of 1301 Kenyon Avenue from NX1 Neighborhood Mixed District to limited NX2 Neighborhood Mixed District to allow reuse of the existing building as a group living not otherwise classified. Use choose one alternative below. A is to approve, requires six votes for approval due to opposition of relevant property owners. One is first consideration of the ordinance above. Two is the final consideration ordinance above. Waiver requested by the applicant requires six votes or be denied. We have germane comments from the general public for two minutes per person, 20 minutes maximum. I believe we had a lot of conversation before the tornado sirens went off. So, I don't know if anyone else wants to speak to it. If not, we can move on to discussion with the council.
I don't know, there were, I think, four people lined up.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was online, so.
If any of those folks are here today, I want to hear from them and...
Okay, as we said, we have two minutes per person. State your name and your address or ward.
My name is Nick Kearns, 4012 Bowden Street, Ward 2. I'm here today to speak about the blessing that Hope Ministries has been to me in my life. Through a series of bad choices and tragic events in my life, I found myself struggling with addiction, homelessness, and everything else that comes with those situations and circumstances. I had nowhere to turn until Hope Ministries opened their doors to me and offered me an opportunity to change my life and show me a new way to live. I entered their year-long recovery program in 2014 and stand here today a husband, a father, healthy, healed, and a free man. One major obstacle that I faced upon completion of the program in 2015 was my living situation. Where was I going to live and would I be able to afford it? I ended up getting a studio apartment as it was all I could afford at the time. It was in a bad neighborhood and it was surrounded by the very things I just worked so hard to escape. Addiction and crime were the norm in my new neighborhood. I left a place of cleanliness and safety in a good neighborhood at the door of faith just to return to a place of struggle. Instead of being part of the solution, I once again found myself being part of the problem. Fortunately, the abundance of life skills, the love, the encouragement, and the new way of life had been planted in me and took root. Not living was no longer an option, so I found refuge in a better place and got back to living. Looking back on my journey, the one thing I needed and would have benefited from post-program was a good transition back into the community. Affordable, clean, well-managed, structured, accountable transitional housing in a good neighborhood was desperately needed for myself and is desperately needed today for men who are changing their lives and becoming productive members of society. May we not forget that for each individual life that has been changed, there is a ripple effect. That ripple touches and transfers to those close to that individual. It transfers into the community and workplace and ultimately into our city. This isn't just about the individual but about the health and success of Des Moines, Iowa. Every time the people and the powers that be...
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, good morning. My name is Al Gross and I reside at 5407 Southwest 20th Street in Des Moines. I'm here to speak on the Kenyon property. And I come today as not only a resident of the Watcher South neighborhood where I have lived for 26 years, but also as a board member of Hope Ministries with whom I have served since 2020. I've seen firsthand the work along and worked alongside the leaders of Hope Ministries and see the commitment and dedication that they and the staff have shown as they serve the homeless in our community every day. Their track record speaks for itself. When I joined the board, Leon told me that many times that working with the homeless is messy business. Recently, when I would drive or ride my bike along MLK south of downtown, I would see that messiness firsthand of the homelessness on our streets in the form of trash and discarded possessions. By the way, thank you for cleaning that up. The other messiness we don't always see or want to see are the issues that the men and women are dealing with. Those issues are much messier than the trash at the homeless camp that's left behind. Hope Ministries addresses those messes. The staff are well-trained to deal with the issues they face and the additional services are needed. They partner with additional community partners. Do I worry about the men that are going to be living in the neighborhood at this property? Not at all. There are men who have graduated from our Life Recovery Program or participated in another of our programs. They're not right off the street. There will be strict criteria to stay at this property and they will have to adhere to that criteria or they'll be moved out. As a 42-year resident of Des Moines, I've seen the city grow and prosper, but homelessness has also grown for various reasons. We at Hope Ministries address the issues every day and through the operation of this property on Kenyon will make a small dent in addressing the issue and helping homeless men return to being productive citizens. In addition, providing affordable housing. Thank you.
Mayor, City Council members, good morning. I'm Val Saltzgaver, 925 Southwest Porter Avenue in Des Moines. I'm here representing Orchard Place, the seller of this property, hopefully to Hope Ministries. I serve as the Chief Financial Officer at Orchard Place and I've also been the point person for this, for this sale. For those of you who don't know us, Orchard Place is a nonprofit children's organization serving kids that have severe mental health issues. We've been around for 138 years and have a really strong tradition of serving kids and serving our community. I can understand the concerns that the neighborhood has brought up related to this sale about having Hope Ministries in the area, their right to ask questions. We ourselves asked questions when Hope first approached us on the sale. We wanted to know more about the men that were going to live in this home. We were going to, we wanted to be able to assess our risk because we have skin in the game here, too. Our residential campus is located on the south side, about four, four blocks from this Kenyon property. And we serve 80 kids at that location who are in treatment for their mental health issues. Those kids use that local library that's out there. They use the local swimming pool that's out there. So, safety is a big concern for us. And I can tell you with absolute certainty that we would not have approved the sale of this property to Hope Ministries if we thought at all that the men that were going to live in that building were going to be a safety concern for our kids. We just would not have. We don't believe safety is an issue here. We fully support Hope Ministries. We think they have an excellent reputation and the work that they do in our community is very important.
Yeah, if I may kick off discussion. This project is in my ward and I've heard from a lot of folks in the neighborhood on this. I've had actually the opportunity, my, my kids were doing swimming lessons at Nahas this past week, so I've had the opportunity, I'd walked it before, but in the last week since our meeting, I've walked this, this area three more times to, to view the area from, from all angles and try and understand this project better. And, you know, the majority of the folks that I heard from in the neighborhood are opposed to this rezoning. So, I can tell you with 100% certainty that if the only factor for this decision in my mind was the neighborhood input, this would be an easy decision and I wouldn't support this project. But the neighborhood input is not the only factor and this is not an easy decision. It's among the more difficult decisions that come in front of us as a council and it relates to some of the most complex and challenging problems facing our community. So, on decisions like this, along with neighborhood and resident feedback, which is absolutely important to me, I weigh the staff recommendation, the planning and zoning action, the history of the applicant, how this fits within a broader policy discussion. And in this case, we are having a very important discussion about how we address homelessness in our community right now. So those are some of the factors that I consider. And I'll go through what I've seen on this. So, in this particular case, city staff recommended that rezoning move forward, subject to a conditional use approval by the zoning board of adjustment for the group home use. Planning and zoning recommended the rezoning on a 12 to 1 vote, again, subject to that conditional use. So this doesn't even happen after our action, it has to go to board of adjustment if it moves forward. The conditional use approval by zoning board of adjustment provides the potential for additional protection and accountability than a typical rezoning would. You know, I was at the Neighborhood Association just this last Tuesday. Watcher South happened to be meeting right after our, our agenda adjourned and I talked about that distinction because the zoning board of adjustment, you know, we could have eight units in here today and there would be absolutely no protection for the neighborhood with someone under the existing zoning. If you have a conditional use under zoning board of adjustment, what that means is for a permit such as that subject, it's subject to reconsideration by the board of adjustment if at any time the neighborhood services director determines that facility has become detrimental to the neighborhood. That provides additional protection to the neighborhood that regular zoning does not. I wanted to talk a little bit about the applicant in this case. This is a project from Hope Ministries, the project to provide 12 supportive housing units as part of the programming that Hope Ministry provides. Now, Hope Ministries serves the homeless population in Des Moines and has a longstanding strong reputation among the service provider community. This particular project is for folks who have been through one of Hope's programs, like the gentleman who we just heard from, who've been through one of Hope's programs, have completed the Life Recovery Program or previously received services and are currently employed and in need of housing. This is a residential facility, not a shelter. It's 12 units with shared common space, kitchen, dining room, rec room. It's in an accessible area. It's within walking distance to two different transit routes. It's near other community amenities, again, walking distance to a library and a pool. It comes with the programming that Hope has, so it has significant rules. I, I won't read through them, they're in our packet, but it has a page of rules that, that these folks are required to meet. And one of the things that is unique because Hope Ministries is a nonprofit that serves the homeless, under state law, they're not subject to the normal eviction process. So, their residents, if they don't comply with those rules, can be kicked out of the facility at, at any time. So it, again, another layer of accountability that is distinct from other, other instances. On-site at this house, there will be a resident housing assistant, someone who has, is compensated for service but not employed by Hope Ministries, who will monitor the property and help with maintenance and resident issues. In addition, anyone who lives in the facility will have access to case management services available to residents. Now, those factors address most of the neighborhood concerns that I heard. I think some of the others have been addressed by speakers that we've heard. So, last Monday, one of the things that I'd heard was concern about both security cameras and taking care of the, the shrubs and the, the overgrowth on the property. And Leon indicated that Hope Ministries was willing to do both of those things, install security cameras and address the, the maintenance of the greenery on the facility. Another concern that I heard was about the proximity to a school. Now, in walking this area, there are significant physical barriers between this property and Wright Elementary School, which is to the north. You have Yater Creek, which is a significant physical barrier in between those. And this property is surrounded on two sides by a heavily wooded area, hence the concern about the shrubbery. That area's maybe even become more overgrown in the number of years that, that this property has sat vacant. And then, the other piece, it was really helpful to hear from Orchard Place. Orchard Place serves some of the most vulnerable kids in our community. And Orchard Place is much closer, the campus of Orchard Place is much closer to this property that is being rezoned than Wright Elementary School. And if Orchard Place, whose mission it is to serve vulnerable kids, is comfortable with this project, I trust that this project will not, will not harm the safety of our We have a tremendous need for more housing in our community and particularly for housing in the continuum of homeless services or people transitioning out of homelessness. Homeward did a gaps analysis late last year. The result of that analysis identified a significant number of housing units needed across our community, not just in Des Moines, but across our community. That need is great for both families and individuals, but specifically for individuals. The report identified a need for 333 rapid rehousing units and 523 permanent supportive housing units. And since this project has been going through the rezoning process, the broader policy framework around homelessness in the U.S. has changed pretty dramatically. The Grants Pass decision by the U.S. Supreme Court only a few weeks ago gives local communities greater ability to enforce ordinances around homelessness. And we're going to be talking about some of that a little bit later this morning in our special meeting. And I'll have some things to say then about that, but what I can say now is that more aggressive enforcement will put additional pressure on all aspects of our homeless service network to serve more people and provide more alternatives to people living on the streets. It will make solutions like this one more important, not less. We have a choice about how we approach these issues as a community. And one of the things that one of our speakers last Monday said, it's kind of stuck with me, it maybe even haunted me a little bit since that time. And, and I know it wasn't meant, met with malice, but he said, it was Mr. Carl, and he said it to me again after the neighborhood meeting when I was visiting with him briefly. But he said, "We need prisons, but we don't need them across from a high school." And I agree with that statement. I, I 100% agree with that statement. But in this case, we don't need prisons for formerly homeless folks. We need housing for them. We need housing for them in neighborhoods that are accessible, that are connected to amenities, and that provide an opportunity for them to build a life. Housing belongs in neighborhoods. And we have a project with a service provider that has a strong track record with a proposal for residential housing that is very much needed and that actions we may very well take later today will make even more critical in an accessible area with amenities nearby. We have the ability to provide additional accountability and protection for the neighborhood through the zoning board of adjustment process. Given all these factors, I will move to approve this project and since passage requires six votes, I will also move item one and item two, which would be a waiver as well.
Councilman Westergaard?
I just want to remind everybody that we are changing the zoning classification from NX1 to NX2. We're not here to talk necessarily about who's going to be there, but that's our job just to approve the change in zoning classification. From there, it goes to board of adjustment. And I sat on board of adjustment for 13 years before I joined the city council. And that is the, that is the body, it's a quasi-judicial body. When they go before board of adjustment, which Hope Ministries must do, that's the place where the board of adjustment, which is made up of citizens, just like you and the audience, that will put any conditions that they feel are necessary on this applicant. So, you know, we can't, we can't put any of those rules in place, but the board of adjustment by issuing a conditional use permit certainly can. And I've seen, when I sat on board of adjustment, I saw variances come back to, to be brought back forward before board of adjustment because they weren't following the conditions that were done. So we have, we have an opportunity to make sure that everything is being done correctly here. Also, I want to talk about, we have, in Ward 2, we have several, several rehab facilities. One of them is Community and Family Resources, which is the old Mecca, which is the old prelude, I believe, and they're working on an expansion to, to expand their, their inpatient therapy and their, and their home. Right now, they are working out of East 38th and Hubble, which was a nursing home. They are using that now for, for, for housing for individuals that have completed their program. I don't think neighbors even understand that it's not a nursing home anymore. It's very quiet, there's not been any issues. They run, they run a fine facility and it's never been a problem. So, I certainly am going to support Councilman Mandelbaum's motion because we need this. The most impactful statement that I heard, and I heard it from Nick earlier when he spoke, when I attended the neighborhood meeting for Community and Family Resources, we had a couple of people who stood up and said, "I have completed their two-year program. I don't think I would be out living on my own today had it not been the support that I received. I really needed to not go back to the environment that, that drew me to the drugs and the alcohol. I needed to have clean, sober place to live in where people around me would support me." And, and it's successful. It works. Thank you. That, I will second that motion. Yes, sir.
Mayor, may I make a comment? I also support this motion. I believe this organization should have the opportunity to present their case to the board of adjustment. It's my understanding that as this property sits today, they are allowed to have eight residents. The applicant wants 12 residents in order for their financial model to work. 12 people. 12 people when we need hundreds of housing units and this applicant wants to do it on their nickel. They're not even asking any support from the city. I think we need to approve this. I, I can't see why we wouldn't. Thank you.
So, Mayor, absolutely. So, first off, during, I met with Leon and Chris Pose originally before any neighborhood meeting, before anything, and sat down with Leon, heard, heard what he wanted to do, all in favor of a faith-based organization to move in and to, and to do some of these things. Then, the mayor and the mayor pro temp was out of the country and I decided that I should go to the neighborhood meeting. I was the only council member to show up at the neighborhood meeting that talked about this. There was about 30 residents there. In my 11 and a half years of being on the council, I've never seen an applicant and a presenter talk to neighbors and act the way that Leon acted towards the neighborhood. They had two very simple requests that Leon addressed when Councilman Mandelbaum asked him at the podium, when he realized that he might be in trouble with some of these votes. Simple, very, simple request, will you put up cameras? Uh, we're not, we're not going to probably do something like that. Will you cut down the brush? Uh, we might, we might not. These people have lived there, some of them over 40 years in this neighborhood, 40 years. They're embedded in the south side. Coach Carl, the, his, the basketball court at Lincoln High School is named after that man. This is his neighborhood and the difference with any other Hope Ministry, there is no supervision at this place. The other places that Councilman Westergaard is speaking of and others, they have 24-hour supervision. This is a revolving door for 12 men. And the way that Leon acted, that is not going to be a good neighbor. He, he was not acting like a neighbor, he was not agreeable or, or even wanted to discuss that. And I had that conversation with Leon afterwards. And, and his, his, his response to me was, didn't matter what I said, they weren't going to agree to it anyway. And I said, "Well, Leon, you lost me in the meantime. No neighbor should be treated like this. Kicking the can down the road to the board of adjustment, which is volunteers, is the wrong way to do it. We were elected by the people to do what they want us to do. Josh was elected by those, the councilman at large was elected by those, and so was the mayor. I'm not, but I have more respect for my constituents in this city to not to do what, what, what they're asking me to do. And I agree with them. So I will be a no vote on this, no matter what, because the way it was presented was awful. And I'll just leave it at that."
Councilman Coleman?
I'm here.
Did you want to, I don't know if you, did you want to speak?
Sure. The, um, the issue to me is, I mean, it, I, the, the, the action's not on board.
Item 64.
But, this is a rezoning and the council, when I was on it previously, painstakingly went through a rezoning process. Maybe the most controversial part of that rezoning was how we were going to deal with facilities that had group living. And we were very specific about wanting predictability and a green light to projects just like this. I have voted yes and am proud to. I have voted yes, and I'm proud to, that this could be a facility for eight people. That's what the rules are. The classification that we're being asked to go to has been used one time in the city, one single time, for a facility that has zero residential Des Moines properties within a half mile of it. This project has hundreds of residential properties within a half mile of it. Further, that facility is staffed 24 hours a day and has the services to make sure that the clients, a similar clientele, that the clients have what they need in terms of support, a referee for disputes in the House, the access to programs, protection and a contact for the neighborhood. That facility has staffing and zero residential properties within a half mile. I would wholeheartedly support this. In fact, Leon and I talked. I offered to try and find the financial gap that would be created because they'd have rent from four less payers. But I don't, I don't feel confident that absent staffing and absent a plan, that we should vary from the ordinance that many of us voted for. We would not be here if this facility was eight. It'd have a green light. I think a couple of council members already said that. The difference between eight and 12 should include some additional services and recognition for the kinds of things that the neighborhoods might be concerned about. This jumps to a new zoning classification, would allow it without the restrictions that council is putting on it. I've never liked the idea of us passing something and then asking citizens unelected to do the hard work of putting conditions on it and to fixing what we did. I think that's, I don't think that's a good way to run a city. I want to continue to work with Hope Ministries. I, there's, I've said this around the community, I'd love them to be operating all kinds of our facilities and programs. They do a great job, and I hope they choose to open this with eight people. And if it works fabulously, we'll be back here adding four to what they want because they've proved up and shown that all of the worries were myths. But let's prove it up first.
I guess I'll just comment on it, too. My concern, I know Hope Ministry does a great job. I donate to Hope Ministries with my leftover food and things from the fair. I know they do a good job. My concern is the number and the rezoning and redoing right within a neighborhood area. We have found a gap for the rent, but I guess there's some other financial things. We are willing to make up that difference to have eight. But at this time, I don't feel, I think Councilman Coleman expressed it, when you start to go into rezoning, it's a bigger issue than just having Board of Adjustment do it. We know we need it. I believe eight is a great number to start with. And based on the facility and the parking and everything that is there, we all know we need more. But just because it's there doesn't mean we just, I think we can accommodate eight very easily. We don't have to rezone it because if for some reason they leave, then what do we have? We don't know who will go in. I know you can go to conditionally used, so it could lead to problems down the line. So I am, I, it's a hard one. It's a very hard decision, but I don't believe this is the appropriate rezoning. With that, please vote.
Yes.
Four yes, three no. Motion for you.
I have a question for the acting city attorney. Because I don't think I've seen a situation like this. Because do we need to move to deny now? And if there are not four votes to denial, what happens? Yeah, there's, this motion didn't pass. Right, but there's been no action now.
The first consideration passed. Is that?
No. Oh, first consideration did pass. Oh, no, it needs six. It needs six because of, so it didn't pass.
It fails. Everything fails.
But I do want to say whether, hopefully it can work even in this location for eight or work for another place, which we have made a commitment to, to also look for another facility if you want the 12 or more numbers. So we are committed to do that, too.
And also, at the neighborhood meeting, the neighbors offered up, make it a women and children's facility. They would have been fine with that. And that was something that they wanted no part of. So.
Let's move on to the next item. What? Oh, I guess we are at overcapacity, so we are going to have to make sure that exits. We have people, the TV is on outside. So if you're here for another item, if you could wait outside. So how many do we have in here? How many can we have?
You need to make a room.
Well, that's what we are going to be doing when we move to.
We have 20 chairs outside.
We have 20 chairs in the outside. So if you're not here for any of the items on this next portion of the agenda, you could please wait outside. Some people might leave, and we will be proceeding. And you can come back in.
Just because you're sitting outside, you can still speak.
Right, you can still come in and speak. And I do want you to know that's one reason nationwide, this facility where we're going to move, we will have a better facility. Next item is 65. On a request from Monsoon Asians and Pacific Islanders in solidarity, Mira Youssef, Officer, to rezone 1212 East 17th Court from N3A Neighborhood District to RX1 Mixed-Use District to allow reuse of an existing dwelling for an office professionally used. A is first consideration of ordinance above, as B is final consideration of ordinance above. Waiver requested by the applicant requires six votes. First will be the parties in interest, applicant for rezoning, and those within 250 feet of the property to be rezoned would be given up to five minutes to speak. Second is germane comments from the general public. Two minutes per person to speak, 20 minutes maximum. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this item? If you would like to come to the podium and state your name and address or ward, you don't have to give both, either one, and.
Okay, my name is Mira Youssef, and I'm with, I'm the executive director of Monsoon Asians and Pacific Islanders in Solidarity. And this will be really simple in comparison to the last one, maybe less political. We are a community-based organization, culturally specific, serving victims and survivors of domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, dating violence, and sex trafficking. We are specifically working with the Asians and Pacific Islanders in Iowa, the whole Iowa. So we were given a house on East 17th Court by the Iowa Coalition Against Domestic Violence. It was, it was like, it was a crack house, and we renovated it. And now, due to COVID 2018, 2019, there was a stained place. We were planning to use it as a transitional housing, but not anymore because we have DOJ funding specifically on that, but it's more scattered sites. This time, we would like to use our 1212 East 17th Court as one of our office spaces because we did a community needs assessment with collaboration with University of Iowa, Iowa Department of Public Health, that there is a need in the Asian community to serve, like moms for maternal health and also elders because our Asian population are getting old. So therefore, we need to provide those services that are culturally specific. Therefore, we want to be in compliance, and we just want to get an approval from the city council. This is my first time of doing this. So therefore, we just want to get that approval, and that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this? If not, is there any discussion between the council?
Seeing, seeing no other people wanting to talk, I am happy to move items 65, 65A, and B, and welcome to the neighborhood.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Vast votes, yes.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Item 66, on 2024 HMA resurfacing program, contract two, resolution approving plans, specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsive responsible bidder as OMG Midwest Inc., doing business as Des Moines Asphalt and Paving, Kevin Bragg, President, $588,480.75. It's council communication number 24-282. A is approval of contract and bond. General public may comment only to the plans, specifications, form of documents, engineer's estimate, or low bidder designation, and those will be the only comments to be considered germane. Two minutes per person, up to 10 minutes. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this item?
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move 66 and 66A.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Vast votes, yes.
Motion carries.
Seven, yes.
Motion 67, on Berlin Pool Repair and Painting Improvements, resolution approving plans, specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsive responsible bidder as Superior Painting and Epoxy Coating LLC. Anthony Negrit, Junior Manager, $318,000. Council Communication Number 24-283. A is the approval of contract and bond. Again, general public comments, up to 20 minutes. Anyone wishing to speak? If not, entertain.
I am happy to move item 67, and I'm just really pleased that council decided to repair our swimming pools that are in our neighborhoods rather than closing them and building one big swimming pool. So I'm happy to move items 67 and 67A.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Vast votes, yes.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Hearings are just ended by, it is now 8:11. We will move on to the ordinances. Did we did those?
We need to go back.
Oh, we need to go back. Okay. Sorry, it was out of town for that meeting. So number six. Number six is approving and authorizing the execution of Iowa Department of Transportation IDOT agreement for Iowa 163 East University Avenue from US 69 East 14th Street to Easton Boulevard Street improvements. Council Communication Number 24-285.
Thank you, Mayor. I pulled this item because I think we have some thanking to do here. This is a great project. I'm always going to support things that help keep our residents safe. And that's exactly what, what we're doing here with item six. I'm pleased we had, we've had, first of all, I want to thank the neighborhood. The neighborhood has been a vocal voice, working with the city and to see that these safety measures are put into place. A huge shout out to Steve Neber, our engineering department head, and his entire department because they really worked with the neighbors and with different stakeholders to, to give us what we're looking at today, and that's improved safety. You know, we had a tragic accident that happened in April of 20, I'm not sure what year it was, just a couple of years ago. 2022, thank you. Yep, I just couldn't remember. That was in April. By May, we were sitting down, having discussions, talking about what we can do to keep everyone safe. Joe, Carl, and myself took a walk from East High School up to East 17th Court so we could walk the route to see exactly what these students, what their path was to getting to and from school. And because of that, we now have additional sidewalks that have been added, again, thanks to our engineering department. So with that said, I am happy to make a motion to approve item six.
Second.
Second. Vast votes, yes.
Seven, yes.
Good work.
Next item, amended ordinance, please.
Next.
Amending Chapter 114 of the municipal code regarding traffic regulation changes. Council Communication Number 24-286. A is speed limit modification from Kiaslaco Way from 10th Street to Interstate 235. B is speed limit modification from 56th Street from Grand Avenue to Ingersoll Avenue. C is traffic control modifications, pedestrian signals related to the East University Avenue improvements from East 14th Street to East 17th Court Avenue Project. D is code correction related to Market District improvements. One, Southeast 2nd Street, East Court Avenue to Des Moines River. Two, Southeast 3rd Street to East Court Avenue to East Market Street. Three is East Elm Street, Southeast 2nd Street to Southeast 4th Street. Four is East Market Street, private, Southeast 2nd Street to Southeast 4th Street. E is corner clearance of parking restrictions. One, 19th Street and Crocker Street. Two, 36th Street and Seneca Street. Three, 37th Street and Beaver Avenue. And four is Thompson Avenue and Lay Street. With that.
I'll move 68, A, B, C, D, 1 through 4, E, 1 through 4, and pursue it to Rule 42A. I'll waive the second and third reading.
Second.
There's been moved and seconded, and I just want to say, a lot of these speed modifications, based on some other accidents we've been having, people need to slow down. So with that, please vote.
Carl?
Vast votes, yes.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Item 69 is amending Chapter 114 of the municipal code relating to the licensing and operation of petticats. Council Communication Number 24-287.
Move item 69 pursuant to Rule 42A. I'll waive the second and third reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Vast votes, yes.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Item 70, amending Section 114-243 of the municipal code relating to civil automated traffic enforcement. A, final consideration of ordinance above. Waiver requested by Dana Winger, Chief of Police, requires six votes. B, approving and amended schedule of administrative penalties or civil penalties for violation of the automated traffic enforcement ordinance.
I don't see any speakers, Your Honor. I'll move 70A and B.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Vast votes, yes.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. The next item we need to continue from the meeting, and I don't know who is here, is the request to speak, is, so the first speaker was Lou Hallmeyer, Jeff Krugler, Tom Rendon, Jerry Bradley.
He's gone.
Maybe I should, if anybody's out.
Jerry left.
And Monette Shade, Viola Perry. I think she might have stepped out.
She's out there.
So did I, if I missed anybody to speak that was out, Viola, would you like to speak? You're up, if you would like to speak.
Yes, I would.
Okay, it is your turn. Again, each speaker will receive three minutes to speak, and will be muted at the end of the three minutes. So if you want to state your name and your, or your address or ward.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. Viola Perry, Ward 1, CCI Racial Justice Team. CCI Racial Justice Team have stayed focused and committed to moving the justice needle on the six points in the 2018 racial profiling ordinance. That was passed by council in 2020. We have worked with some of you council members, Mandelbaum, Bowson, Voss, City Manager Sanders, on two of those points, which would be Data Analysis Unit and the CAB, or Community Advisory Board. Mayor Bowson, you accommodated the Racial Justice Team with a meeting to give us updates on the Data Analysis Unit and the CAB, among other discussed issues. on the data analysis unit, unit, and the CAB, among other discussed issues. In regards to the Community Advisory Board, you informed us that a draft of a CAB was being drawn up, which you hadn't seen yet, but it should be done in a few weeks. That was in April, and now we rolled into July. I'd like to reclaim a few minutes, thank you. Now we have rolled into July. One wonders if it takes this long to respond to any other organization on certain issues of concern. It appears that we have been put on a wait and see list. Well, here we are, still pushing the needle for answers, because as I stated at an earlier council meeting, it has been seven years of our work. We stand on seven this year of competition.
Thank you. Lori Young. Lori Young.
Good morning, my name is actually Antoinette Shade, sorry about.
Oh, you were on, okay, that's.
Yeah, so, uh, my name's Antoinette Shade. I reside in Des Moines Third Ward. Um, I stand here today in solidarity with CCI's Racial Justice Committee and on behalf of the community that is deserving of answers. We understand that the Citizens Advisory Board has drafted, uh, its next steps, and this milestone reflects considerable efforts of dedication in many people in our community. It introduces a crucial layer of accountability and transparency, incentivizing officers to engage the community with fairness and with integrity and with true commit, and with true commitment to their dedication to protect and serve.
Okay, take your time.
Sorry, I was rushing.
No, that's fine, take your time, you're doing fine.
So the matter before us today is simple. Residents deserve to know what's in the draft. We deserve to know where the city stands on this issue, and we deserve to have a voice in the, in the matter. And before I continue, I want to remind you where this journey for justice began. In twenty twenty, our city and our nation were gripped by agony and frustration following the unjust death of George Floyd at the hands of an officer who betrayed the very principles of trust and honor that should define every law enforcement in every community. That moment commanded your attention. And for the sake of anyone who could possibly share Mr. Floyd's fate, we cannot allow for our focus to fade. Our racial justice team has consistently, has consistently requested the simply review the draft and to offer our input as citizens and as community advocates. Several of you here today gave us your word, that this was our priority. However, we have been faced with repeated delays and unfulfilled promises. And this leads me to question why, for so many capable and smart people on this board, is something so simple proven to be so difficult? If you, if you struggle to fulfill this basic commitment, how can we trust you on more significant matters? This issue transcends mere procedure. It is fundamentally about trust and transparency. The role of our police is not just a position, it is a vital connection between our community and our safety, and our voices should be welcomed in the process, and it is a reasonable request. So again, I ask why something so simple proven to be so difficult? We urge you to work with and not against community advocates on behalf of our city's most vulnerable, and to prioritize police accountability and safety of our citizens above political posturing. So it is simple, please release the draft for our review, and if you fail to honor this promise you made, thank you.
Tashida, Tashida Barfoot? Is Tashida here? Zachary Kymen? Adam Callanan?
Hello, my name is Adam Callanan, and I live in Ward three. Today, I'm speaking with Des Moines People's Town Hall. Last Thursday, the city council announced two emergency meetings to rush past the council's usual schedule in order to promptly criminalize being homeless in Des Moines. In the city's proposal, homeless people caught sleeping would be subject to a misdemeanor in order to pay a fine. People with fines and criminal records will have a harder time getting out of homelessness. Everyone on city council knows this will not solve the rising rate of homelessness in the city and across the country, but some on council clearly want the city to be able to further punish people who are already in a dangerous situation. The city seems to know how unpopular and controversial this is since they're holding these, handling these issues as emergency and holding meetings without time listed in the middle of a workday on a Monday, uh, with less than a week's notice and without any list opportunity for a proper hearing. It's also worth knowing that the city already breaks its own rules regarding encampments. The city has, over the past few years, taken down encampments during severe winter weather, even though the city's own rules, including those proposed today, state they will not do so, and whenever they're talking to the press, they pretend that they never do that, but again, we know that they do. Most city proposals have some fiscal estimation of how much they will cost the city. This ordinance has no such calculation included with it, but we know that since the start of the year, the city has already spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on clearing encampments, and this ordinance clearly aims to increase that amount. It would make much more sense to use that money to fund services for our homeless neighbors that council knows are underfunded. Thank you.
Excuse me, Darrell Maher. Darrell Maher. Jolene Prescott. Okay, with that, I believe we're done with the meeting that was continuing.
I'll make a motion to receive and file seventy-one A through ten.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Vast votes, yes.
And with that, we are adjourning this meeting.